The next matter on the agenda is ZBA 2009-19, 7636 Madison Street. A public hearing to consider a variation from Section 9-4C to reduce the rear yard setback from 25 feet to 12.7 feet and such other variations as may be necessary to construct in addition. Would Mr. Teetz was proper notice given pursuant to the applicable notice codes?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to open up the hearing and admit the packet into evidence concerning that ZBA 2009-19?
Standing.
Al makes the motion, Richard Seguin's all in favor. I ain't gonna oppose. A hearing now, we now call upon the petitioner and present their case.
My name is Rizard Falconian, I'm representing the property owner, Mr. DiBenedetto, who was president at the meeting and seated in the headroom.
Could you please spell your name for the board?
Sure. First name is ROS A R I O, last name is P I C O N E.
Thank you, Mr. Falconian.
We filed an application for a modification of the zoning. The board members may remember that previously, Mr. DiBenedetto came before the board seeking to have a zoning variance, if I could put this up there, to build a beer garden. During the course of that, it became evident that it had changed to a building and that we were going to need to come back before the board to address a variance in the setback. What we're requesting is a variance to modify the setback from 25 feet to 12 feet.
Anything further to add, sir?
Just the comment of, I also have another petition which, if everyone's finished with that one. If anyone is familiar with that section of Madison Street West of Displanes, I counted 11 properties, this is a depiction of some of them. On that block, there's at least 11 properties that also had various differing setbacks that are less than 25 feet.
Roger, can you give us the original address?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Starting at Displanes Avenue, you have that building, and then as you proceed down and go through, including all the way to the other corner where, I believe, the 711 is, and there's a nice shot down here, you can see at least 11 of the properties have issues as Mr. DiBenedetto has issues, that their buildings go back more than, there's not a 25-foot setback. Whether it was the original beer garden that was envisioned and what was shown before the board, or the structure that is now there, either one of those would have created somewhat the same footprint and would have had the same, I think it's about four feet, maybe four feet, three inches of setback off the alley. So, the difference between that and the other building, there really is no change in the setback, it's just that structure didn't need the zoning versus this structure that needs the zoning. But other than that, there's really no change or no impact to the community or the surroundings.
Thank you. I kind of agree with you as far as there'd be no change or the footprint being the same, but I'll ask the million dollar question, I see Mr. Adams is here, I see a lot of people here, and I'm sure they're here, the question, that's on everybody's mind, how did it go from the original line of having the gap until being completed? And from center block to frame and...
What you have is, well, let me start this way, this might make it a little easier. What you see here, which is what was presented to the board and which was what was approved, would appear to me to be somewhat of a building with a roof on it. This apparently technically is considered a fence with a roof. Although it has eight-foot walls of concrete block, it's considered a fence with a roof. During the course of the process of building this and finishing it, it was determined that there would be certain problems with it. One of the problems because of the open nature of the top would be an issue of vermin infestation, having food out there. Because of that, there were changes that were made that sealed up this opening. The other issue would have been, very clearly, there would have been a fire problem with the construction of this roof, and with this roof not being part of the other part of the building. Because this roof, as was constructed, was 100% open, made out of wood. In the process of that, there were changes made to it in order to try to seal it up, keep the outside elements out, and then the roofline was changed because the roofline could not be tied into the other building, creating a sealed environment, and so it got changed to a flat pitch roof, and windows were designed and put in in order to try to keep outside things out and inside things in. The result of it actually, on the impact of the neighborhood, creates a much quieter environment to the existing neighbors and the existing neighborhood, and it also kind of presents things getting in and out and creating problems with the neighbors' noise. And finish-wise, it probably gives a much nicer and a much more finished product than what this was. The problem was, was as the negotiations and as the development was going on, I don't think anyone envisioned that this was a fence which didn't require setback, and this is a building that does require setback, and when we got to this point, then there was a consensus that it had changed from a fence to a building and needed to then have a proper zoning setback. In the previous meeting, the spaces for the vehicles were removed, and as you can tell from this, this is not something that could be moved. This is a structure that has eight-foot cement walls to it, so theoretically, I mean practically, there is a change, but as it relates to zoning, this building was non-movable as this building was non-movable, or this structure, if you want to call, was non-movable. So, the impact on the zoning would, is really, there is no difference because this was going to be in violation of the setback as well as this, but this technically is considered to be a fence with a roof. This is considered to be a building.
Thank you for your explanation.
Thank you. I hope it was clarifying, and I know it's kind of hard to look at this and see this as a fence, but it does...
Does that sit on a 20-inch foundation?
This building here? Yes.
Any other members of the zoning board have any questions for the petitioner? Is that wall the same distance that this, these two are the same distance, right? This wall and this whole?
Yes.
Everything is just pretty much identically what we already approved except for that little gap there, that gap was just closed in?
Yes.
Any members, any other further questions for any members of the ZBA? Any questions or comments from the public? Please step up.
I will speak initially to the issue at hand. Conceptually, yes, what you have before you now is to decide whether or not these spaces, I'm sorry that this setback should be dropped in favor of the addition that's there. Let's assume there was no addition there for right now. The land is still vacant, so let's roll the clock back a little bit. Okay, I too went and checked out the neighborhood yesterday, and I did read the staff report, and I do find that, you know, all these photographs here and what was put in the staff report are, you know, a wonderful historical, archaeological record of things that took place in this town over the last century. I think we need to talk about the people who honored the setback, who've honored the setback with huge financial investments, even within the last six years. I saw Mr. Sundry here earlier, he was owner of Cafe De Luca, and that's new construction, and he dumped, word on the street was over a million dollars developing that property, and he honored the setback off the street. And everything up and to that setback is new construction. There was quite a distance from the original building to where it is now. That's 7427 Madison. 7410 used to be the old China Knights. Now, I think it's fondly known as Casa de Boros, the cigar store, but it has condo units up above. I'm sure that cost a heck of a lot more than a million bucks to build that building, and we sat here through all the zoning and planning and looked at the drawings and everything, and they honored the setback. You know, these are multimillion dollar investments. They honored it. Why should we let... You know, that was supposed to be a restaurant on the first floor, I think if you guys recall, that fellow from Old Park Ale House was the spearhead of the restaurant, so they managed to work something out without having an addition on the back. So, these are, these are the people that took our law seriously. Now, perhaps some of you have seen excerpts from the meeting when the fence was proposed and approved. I posted them on YouTube, and I think Mr. Boyle made it very, 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 did I say very, clear that there was to be no connection between the top of the fence. And yes, there are brick fences, block fences all over Drive through River Forest, I think there's plenty of examples of brick and block fences there with a roof structure, which could have very easily been constructed with a one-hour or two-hour rated inner ceiling if that was really a big concern. As long as they weren't connected, you know, that was acceptable. And I, like others here, I think that I thought having outdoor seating in that location was pretty cool. I think it, you know, kind of was barely a blip on the radar when it was proposed. But I don't think, you know, we should be making allowance in this case on several levels. I mean, this owner took the initiative to take the law into their own hands. If there were negotiations that took place between the building department and the builders and the owner, it didn't come out in the FOIAs. I FOIA'd all the documents. No communications, no inspection reports, no dialogue, so I don't know really what went on. So, whatever's being said now and what's in the staff report doesn't jive with the fact that the official record doesn't show any of these conversations. So, we have basically somebody who was renegade converting a beer garden into an addition, and again, taking the law into their own hands. Now, from a personal standpoint, I'm very disappointed, and I've been a supporter of Gattano since he got here. I spent the last three New Year's Eves, New Year's Eves, at his establishment, and he's always put out a nice show and a nice spread, but he didn't follow the rules. And now we got some, you know, somebody acting on his behalf saying, "Well, it's, you know, it's almost, you know, fence, it's almost an addition." You know, I mean, they're kind of the same thing, Florida, it's a big, heavy wall. No, we have a guy that took the law into his own hands. Now, I also see that I, well, in my perception, and the five of you are kind of in the trick bag right now, I think, let me pass out these documents.
Can I ask for a corner border? If there's going to be submittals to the board, don't they have to be tied in advance of a meeting?
We're a little flexible on the rules here. He wants to pass out, that's fine. Did he give you a copy, sir?
Yes, he did.
So, I see them as being in the trick bag, you guys. Now, this structure is not a fence.
Can I ask another question?
Sir, sir, I'm gonna say the same thing I told Mr. Beckman. We do things in our way of process. One person's to box at a time. You can speak all night, I got nowhere to be. He's a citizen, he's gonna talk, please sit down, you can talk as long as you want.
Yes, and I apologize for my outburst before.
I appreciate that.
We have a building here, these are, the first page is an as-built, as it was explained to me, it's an as-built depiction of what's supposed to be underneath the facade, I'm sorry, the structure, the addition, in quotes. That doesn't need code by a long shot. I believe we have a frost line requirement here in Forest Park. I know it for a fact firsthand, I had to observe it to the letter when I put up my fence. Mr. Boyle made it very clear to me if I didn't go down 42 inches, there'd be a problem. So, he sent Mr. Rinker around to make sure, and he measured all the holes, and I think I hit about 44. So, that doesn't need code. You know, I got out there yesterday, and I looked around the site, and the second page is a photograph, this is the southeast corner of the quote addition unquote, and gosh darn it, it doesn't look like they just poured a sill right over the existing parking pad. I could be wrong, but I very carefully walked around the entire foundation. I didn't see any tool marks, any chisel marks, any saw marks, anything to indicate that any kind of a trough or trench or footing, or whatever you want to call it, was provided there. So, there are other things too. I mean, there's a power pole sticking out in the middle of the roof now, and I, when I was asked by ComEd to bring my meter out from inside my workshop to the outside, they required that I have a cutout, master fuse within a couple, a certain recommendation of the meter, in case there was a fire emergency, so that if the fire department had to cut the power, they could do that. Well, I also worked a restaurant yesterday, it wasn't even open, so if there was a fire there, I guess the fire department would have had to break in and disconnect the electricity, and that could be a problem. Anyway, the trick bag that I see you guys are in right now is, if you approve this, are you approving what's sitting there now? That's the question, and that's where I'm gonna leave you. You know, what's there now, this is illegal as the day is long by our codes. And, you know, so what you say at this point, I think has ramifications on allowing a substandard, unsafe structure to stand. Going back to the conceptuality of why we're all here tonight, why does he deserve a special privilege for breaking the law and taking it into his home hands? Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you. Sir?
May I have a phone?
Yes, you may.
And I apologize if I was to understand that this was a zoning board meeting, and the issues were with zoning, and whether the creating and requesting a setback, a variance in the setback to 12 feet. Theoretically, and I don't want to play games with you, but theoretically, we could demolish this building tomorrow and build a skyscraper. It's not the issue of what's standing there now, it's the issue of getting a variance of the zoning to 12 feet back. This building, or structure, whatever you want to call it, would have been sitting there, and as a fence, it doesn't violate, but I don't know necessarily if that is a fence or not, but we did nothing to change the footprint between that and that. And so, therefore, the arguments about a substandard building, whatever the issues are with the building, those will be addressed with the building department, and we've already started addressing those issues and being in discussions with them. When the gentleman says that this was a rogue building project, this wasn't a rogue building project. There were communications, there were conversations back and forth, inspectors were there regularly. You can't tell me that building gets built and there's not an inspector there to look at it as it's going up. This didn't get thrown up in a day or two. This building got constructed over several months, and there were inspectors in and out of it. But I don't want to address that because I don't think it's relevant. If there are problems here, those problems will be fixed. But the real question before the board tonight is the issue of zoning, a 12-foot setback versus a 25-foot setback, which would have been the same if it was for this, and the same as it was for this, or if you're gonna put a skyscraper back there, and you could put one 12-foot, whatever it was, that would be, it's just a question of zoning as we sit here tonight.
And sir, and this chairman and this board is well aware that the request is simply for a variation to reduce the rear yard setback from 25 feet to 12.7 for an addition, and that's what we will consider when we vote, but it is a public forum, it's a public meeting, we're all for the, you know, the exchange of open ideas here, so we're well aware of what we're going on.
The only point that I was making, maybe I can draw another analogy. For 18 years I've been a lawyer, I practice family law in this area. People get married, people get divorced, people have conflict. We have a situation, and I don't want to draw light of it, but we have, my client has one version of what happened, the village has a version of what happened, I have a version of what happened, you gentlemen may have different versions of what happened. What we're trying to do is rectify those situations and what has occurred, and get everyone on the same page, and have something that will satisfy everyone and that will be within compliance, within zoning, within code, and we're standing there and we're willing to do that. And it's not double speak, and it's not, "Ooh, you caught us in the middle of the night building a building." As we stand here, my client, as much as anyone wants to have a safe building that he can have his people, and as Mr. Beckman said, he's been there the last three years, but maybe one of the things that he noticed was that the regular size of the restaurant was rather small, and it only reaches a certain amount, and you can't build up, and he doesn't have other options. As Ms. Charlton put in her report, we couldn't go forward onto the street because there's no room to go forward onto the street. The back was the only option, and my client already had built an addition on the back, this was just a question of building a structure on the back to support additional patrons because he's become successful here, and we need to be able to add more seating. And to say that you could put a one-hour rating on this to make it fireproof, I don't believe that to be the case. But my only comment is, whatever issues there are there, we will address those with the building department. I believe one of the recommendations that she's made is that we're gonna have to have an architect review everything, develop a list of the problems with the building. We've already had a gentleman out and given us a submittal of a report with some of the issues that he sees, and we're willing to address those problems and make everything okay. But I, just as I stand here, had this have been built and the noise that would emanate from that, if there wouldn't be neighbors complaining about the sounds, you see the pictures of the alley back there, and I have to say, if you run up and down that alley, not the best maintained alley in the world, and there would be a concern about vermin and things running around back there, because there's garbage crate cans running amok in the back of that. He makes a reference to the fact that other restaurants were capable of going up doing it. I believe that the building that was built at the end was built very recently, and they were given a zero line all the way back to the alley where the, I believe, the 711 is. There's been many people that have built along this block, that have built all the way back or with minimal property lines, so I don't think what he's requesting is unusual or out of the ordinary for this block. And as I said, 11 of the 22 parcels there already have setbacks that are not the appropriate 25-foot setbacks. In fact, there was one picture here where there's one where they actually have some kind of structure on top of this building, which is not, which is oversized for an accessory building, and they have a building, they have a structure on top of it, which would certainly not be in compliance also.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Charlton?
I just wanted to point out that he's correct in that recommendations, to draw your attention to those, number three and number four, three rates prior to the consideration by the council, the applicant must provide an inspection report to the village for review by the village consultants that is prepared, signed, and sealed by a licensed architect, outlining those improvements that do not comply with the building code, and that the fourth one, construction must meet or be altered to meet applicable building and fire safety codes prior to occupancy. That would be a condition upon which you could add to your recommendation for the zoning setback, just so that you know there are additional measures that are gonna be coming forward to make sure that what's there today, if it continues, would comply with the other codes that are relevant.
So, the foundation and every other aspect of the building would comply with the villages?
Those would be, if they're outlined in the staff, in the architectural report, is something that needs to be altered or modified or reinforced, whatever that recommendation is, that's something that the council would have.
Okay, I mean, he spells it outright on his, I'm sorry, but I was not here for that particular zoning meeting, but he spells it outright on there, it's a 20-inch deep foundation.
Right.
And you've got an entire building sitting on a 20-inch deep foundation.
So, I guess the recommendation would need to be, if there's anything that can be done, to solidify that?
Well, that would, I mean, when you say number three, the problems that the architect is gonna give you from a signed and sealed by a licensed architect outlining those improvements, they will be, they will have to be done.
Whatever recommendations that the building department requires will be enforced.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments from any members of the public? Any further questions or comments from any members of the ZBA? But remember, the ZBA, I care to make a motion.
All right, Al's uncle with the staff, recommend the motion. Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I recommend that the zoning board of appeals approve a variation to reduce the required rear yard setback from 25 feet to 12.7 feet to accommodate an addition for the restaurant located at 7636 Madison Street associated with ZBA 2009-19, subject to the following conditions. No portion of the building addition may be placed closer to the rear lot line at 12.7, and the building addition may not exceed one story in height nor provide any business service above the first floor. The wood storage addition that extends south of the wall of the main building must be removed. Prior to the consideration by the council, the applicant must provide an inspection report to the village for review by village consultants prepared, signed, and sealed by a licensed architect, outlining those improvements that do not comply with the current building code requirements. Construction must meet or be altered to meet applicable building and fire safety codes prior to occupancy. A board-on-board wooden fence with a gate must be constructed at the rear of the property at the east end to contain dumpsters and provide wood storage. A plan detailed for this improvement must be submitted and approved by the Department of Public Health and Safety prior to the installation, and installation must be completed prior to the occupancy. Except as modified by the, I'd like to add a line in there, call it five and a half, or put something on the end. You guys will be receiving detailed drawings from this architect of how the modifications are gonna be made. Were there any drawings of that other than that?
For this?
Yeah.
I don't, no.
That's the, that's the drawing submitted to get?
Yes.
Okay. I would assume we're gonna have detailed drawings from this architect laying out what modifications are gonna be made?
There's gonna be a report stating what the deficiencies are and what needs to be done to correct those.
Okay, can I add that, that they'll get detailed drawings from this architect of what needs to be completed? Detailed drawings of modifications from the licensed architect? At number six, number six, except as modified by his own variation granted herein, all construction shall comply with the building and zoning codes of the village of Forest Park and shall require approval by the Department of Public Health and Safety. No building permits and no certificate of occupancy for the subject property shall be issued by the Department of Public Health and Safety to the owner unless all debts owed to the village of Forest Park by the owner have been paid in full prior to the issuance of such permits or certificate. Any violation of the above conditions will result in a violation of the village code of the village of Forest Park, and the owner shall be subject to a fine for each day said violation exists. The variation shall be valid for one year after its passage on approval unless a building permit has been issued. The variation shall expire and cease to be of any force or effect if any use associated with said variation is removed and not replaced within six months after such removal. Yeah, just let me think a minute. No, okay, that's it.
Bill makes the motion. I will second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I would just indicate, as I had just indicated previously, what we're here today for is just to request a part of the variations reduced to rear yard setback from 25 feet to 12 feet for an addition, so when we're voting, that's... for an addition, so when we're voting, that's what we need to consider, and that's what I will be considering. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, will the gentleman secretary please take the vote?
Al Buckland?
No.
Paul, no. Mackenzie?
Yes.
Skoradi?
No.
Zer?
Yes. Sir, unfortunately, your request failed by a vote of three to two. As you're well aware, council, if we are just recommending by a transcript of the night's proceeding, the record will be forwarded to the village council, and they will take action on your petition. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.